Hi, everybody. Good morning. Thank you for joining us today for the Board of Selectmen Candidate Forum, which is sponsored by the Council on Aging. I think I know pretty much all of you, but just in case you don't, my name's Colleen Thompson and I am the Plimpton Director of Elder Affairs and will be acting as moderator for this event. For your information, this forum is being recorded for presentation on Public Access TV on the Area 58 website and will be available on YouTube. Excuse me. Our plan today is to give each candidate three questions, which they have been previously provided. They will have three minutes to answer each of those questions. Following this phase, you folks will have opportunity to ask them questions. I'll speak again before that time. And I probably don't need to say this, but I will anyway. I expect the candidates and the audience to be polite, respectful, and well-mannered. If you don't, I will wash your mouth out with soap.[95.04][95.04](Laughter) All right. So let's get started. For those who might not know, our two candidates are incumbent Mark Russo. You want to wave your hand? And challenger Gary Somero. I was actually supposed to speak to you to decide who was going to go first. Do you want to? Okay. Well, he was quicker than you. So, Mark, you get to go first.
Okay.
The first question is, why do you feel you are the best candidate for the job? What do you offer that will make a difference? And start.
So, good morning, everyone. I am indeed Mark Russo. I've been a selectman here for coming up on nine years.
Speak louder, please.
Louder still? Okay. So, I grew up in Kingston. It's actually on my list of things along the way. If reelected, this room needs better acoustics and we need loudspeakers. It's real high on my list, particularly for someone with old ears like me. I know I'm already off-subject, but good point. Is that better? Can you hear me now? So, I know many, if not all, of you. I did grow up in Kingston. My wife, Kim, and I moved to Plimpton 19 years ago. I've been a veterinarian for 50 years. I continue to care for the pets of the South Shore at the Kingston Animal Hospital that my father started 75 years ago. Some of you may know my dad. He died at 93, felt like he was being robbed, that he should be 100, came to work like eight days before he died. He was a piece of work. Anyone remember my father? Yeah, there you go. Hey, Dad. So, in any event, I've admired Plimpton my whole life. In truth, I think Plimpton is the hidden gem of the South Shore and to some extent, the more it stays a hidden gem, the better. As I wrote as an article in the newspaper, "I love Plimpton's special character, our agricultural heritage, our historic buildings, the rural flavor, the small-town feel, as well as the varied talents of fellow townsfolk and the strong sense of community." And underneath it all, it's that stuff that motivates me. Why am I running? Fundamentally, I want to protect and nurture and perpetuate just that. In my time of leadership over the last decade, I think a whole bunch has been accomplished by the Board of Selectmen and yet there's a lot left to do. So also, I'm kind of fragile. We have experiences where the other towns, where small changes in the leadership can make huge changes in how functional or dysfunctional the government can be. So, why am I running? Perpetuate the unique character of this town. I believe I have the knowledge and the experience to do that. I have a proven track record of accomplishments along the way. I have a willingness and an energy to keep doing that. So, I welcome the opportunity through this morning to flesh those themes out a little bit.
Good, thank you. Wait a minute, I have to... You didn't use up all the time. Eight seconds left.[311.64][311.64](Laughter) All right. Same question to you, Gary. Why do you feel that you're the best candidate for the job? What do you offer that will make a difference?
First of all, my name's Gary Somero. I'm a firefighter here in Plimpton. Have been involved in fire and EMS for well over 30 years. What I feel that I can bring to the town, again, like Mr. Russo stated, the quaintness of the town, to keep the town small, keep it a hidden gem, but progress to our residents to get them more involved to see how we can make this town a better place for our residents. There are a lot of excellent things that Mr. Russo brought up that I feel the same way. I'm new to the town. I've been here five years and I fell in love with this place. I love Plimpton. It is an awesome town. I'm a single father. My daughter goes to school at the Denit and I feel the school, as well as the elderly that we have in town, need to be taken care of and we're going to... If I'm elected, I'm planning on doing the best job that I can do. I'm new to politics. That's both good and bad, but I'm willing to learn. And I'll have a lot of assets that I can reach out to. You folks are included. I want to keep Plimpton the way it is. It's a beautiful town and there are ways out there to keep it that way.
That's it? Thank you. Just want to say, I labored over picking a tone that would cut them off.[436.77][436.77](Laughter) Hardly seemed fair.[440.36][440.36](Laughter)
Somebody's got to play it.
That's right. All right. Question number two. What are your top three priorities for the town? What are the most important issues we face? What are your ideas for solving the problems? Okay, Mark.
So, typical of someone in the political world, I'll answer a slightly different question because I have four top priorities and they are to protect Plimpton's unique and distinctive character, which has made Plimpton such a pleasant and attractive place. That's number one. Number two, promoting a balanced, frugal, insane fiscal policy that provides the needed services but also controls growth. Three, continuing to foster effective, efficient, collaborative, civil, and welcoming town government. And four, to focus on the particular... On the needs of all residents, but the particular needs, particularly for high-quality education for children and equally importantly, if not more so, addressing the affordability and housing issues for our senior citizens. It's a big list and this stuff gets done brick by brick, little thing after little thing. What I really know is come Sunday, March or May 21st, if I'm reelected, I have a big list of things to get to, not the least of which is truck exclusion, continuing to struggle dealing with speeding issues in town, improving the town website, more staff training, particularly on de-escalation and stressful situations. We have more work to do on the employee manual, particularly formulating a progressive disciplinary action system that makes clear to people how things will be done and how they can correct things. To continue to support the town administrator, which I feel like is a main function of Board of Selectmen. Lots more to do in land preservation. Need to deal with the MBTA legislation that's such a pain in the neck. Area 58 and Comcast, we need a new contract. We got to deal with the fire station. In the immediate, we have to deal with hiring a new fire chief. So, that's a big, long list. It's a lot of work. It sort of epitomizes what's involved in doing this stuff. And as I said, it is one brick at a time, working on all these things. So, these are things I've worked on and will continue to work on and welcome the opportunity to continue to do so.
Thank you. Looks like we'll get out of here in time for lunch. Gary, your turn. What are your top three priorities, or four, if you want to? What are the most important issues we face? What are your ideas for solving the problems?
I do have four. My top priority is to preserve the charm that the town of Plimpton has as a great community. My second is the elderly population, the services that they need that the town provides now and what the town will provide in the future. Another one is the schools. Education is important. School safety is important. Not saying that the school shootings will happen here. It's very, very slim, but it can happen in small towns like we're seeing on the news. I've dealt with... As a paramedic for over 30 years, I've dealt with children that have had trauma and it's just something that we need to be on top of because they're our future. And financial responsibility. We need to keep that in mind. We can't go spending $10 million on something that we're not going to need. So, we definitely have to be financially responsible and maintain what we can maintain. About affordable housing, again, I'm a single parent. I can't afford a house in Plimpton. I have to rent. It's tough for me. I work as a paramedic in the city of Brockton. I don't make a lot of money. So, I have to do my budget, but I want to stay in town. There isn't a house in town that I can afford to buy right now. So, that's something that we all have to work on. Employees of the town that want to live in town, there's no place... There's no place for them. I think we need to work on that to get the... Whatever we have to do to make the affordable, not saying 40, be affordable housing in the town of Plimpton for our employees, our future residents, and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. You do know you only get paid a dollar to be a selectman.
I don't care about the cost.[796.76][796.76](Laughter) That's all. I'll just pick up an extra shift and so, you know.
And actually, I never collected. So, is the treasury here?[804.11][804.11](Laughter) Question number three. So, when I ran for selectmen and had to... Ours was actually kind of a debate. This is a little lower key. We had just had the Reinhardt-Reinhold study, which was about the public safety buildings. And we have a lovely new police station and we're still talking about a fire station. So, I'd like to know what your views are on the current fire station, the possibility of building a new station, and the impact of both of those buildings on Plimpton's future.
So, a tough question, pretty complicated, pretty challenging. I've served for a decade on various task forces that have been looking at these issues on public safety buildings. 10 years. It took 10 years from the time we started until we actually got the police station built. I kind of regret back then. I was kind of an advocate for building both fire and police together. Had we done that now, we would have been done with it at a lot less expense. The big question, of course, is, do we renovate the old fire station? Do we build a new one? It's the perennial endless debate of renovation versus building new and people grapple and wrestle. Sometimes there's no absolute clear answer and you just have to make a decision one way or another. We need to do something with the fire station. I think there are a lot of questions that are not yet answered and it's only when they're answered that we can decide whether renovation or building a new station would be the way to go. In particular, there's a lot of infrastructure issues, particularly septic and water. I think we need those figured out before we can do anything else. Certainly, the other one is if we are going to build a new building, where we are going to site it. And the big thing, does it all fit? And these are all questions we're still working on. And then even before we get to the biggest question, which is the cost, I'm hearing that new construction, particularly with prevailing wage law, we might be looking at $850 per square foot to build a new building, which is just astounding to me. I think most of us can remember the days when you could build new construction for $100 a square foot. It's a big question as to whether we can afford that. We really need to be both realistic, I think, and at the same time aspirational. We have to improve this. There's the bigger issue too in making each of these decisions is I think the town folks in general and all the task force and committees that have worked on this over the last 10 years, deep down, what we hope is an organized town campus that can be vibrant, kind of community-oriented, citizens can come and partake of. So, a lot less... A lot left to do. A good thing is, we had the wisdom many years ago when Cisco came in to put away each year a fair portion of the Cisco money. So, we do have some money stowed away and hopefully, we can build a new station if we go that route without a change in the tax rate.
Thank you. Very close.[1031.26][1031.26](Laughter) Same questions for you, Gary. What are your views on the current fire station, the possibility of building a new station, and the impact on Plimpton's future?
That is a very good question. As a firefighter in the town of Plimpton, the fire station needs to be replaced. There are federal mandates now that we need to follow for a fire station. The station is too small. The apparatus isn't getting any smaller. There are no segregated bedrooms. There's one bathroom. There is no protection for the employees from the exhaust. Cancer is killing our first responders. We are 99% more to get cancer than a normal person because of all the stuff that we have to deal with. The new station needs to be built and we need to protect our first responders. I know there's a financial problem here. We can work around it, but there's certain things that were mandated to have that we can't change. Again, our fire apparatus, it's bigger. We've got more of it. In the future, we may have four or five people working at the fire station in 20 years. You build a station now to last for 40 years and you'll get that out of the station. I've seen the plans, the plans that they have at the firehouse are excellent plans. They follow all the guidelines that we need to follow. I think it would be beneficial to the town to have that fire station. The septic, the water, yes, that all needs to be worked out and I know it's a long process. They're not going to build the fire station tomorrow. I know it's a long and drawn-out process. It's a needed asset to the town. If we do it right, they won't have to build another fire station for 40 years. Again, this station was designed for call firefighters, which means guys coming from home to get the trucks and go to the fire. We have permanent, full-time firefighters there 24/7 that don't have the facilities they need and are exposed. Every time that truck starts up, they're exposed to the carcinogens that the exhaust is giving off. It's not big enough to move around trucks. It's a small, you know, small station. We just need to replace it. And number one is firefighter safety and the protection of our firefighters. If we have that protection, it's less likely for us to be paying someone that gets injured due to cancer for a lifetime.
Thank you, Gary. All right. Now, we're going to open the questioning up to the audience. We're going to maintain the three-minute limit on answers. You can direct your questions to either one or both of the candidates. I want you to come up to the podium, speak clearly and loudly so that everyone can hear you. This microphone is for the recording. Let's see. Give your name and address when you come up here. First?
Good morning. My name is Nancy Butler. I live on 49 Maple Street. I'm a former town clerk and I've been on many boards and committees in the town of Plimpton in the 51 years that we've lived here. My question is to both of you. How do you feel about... I'd like your opinion on in-person meetings versus Zoom meetings. Would you address that, please?
I believe that it is beneficial to have in-person meetings because you... The Zoom meetings, it's just not personable anymore, you know? I'm a firm believer in the face-to-face meetings, face-to-face talking to people. It works out better.
Thank you. Mark?
Pretty complicated question. I think the verdict's out. The technology is certainly there that Zoom meetings can be quite productive. There are some real advantages. There are real advantages to committee members, board members in that they can't... They do not have to be in this physical location. I think, albeit it's been said otherwise, that if the goal is as much access as possible for the citizenry, I think that probably comes through Zoom in terms of people not needing a babysitter, people not necessarily needing to be in town. I think ultimately, the answer is going to be hybrid meetings, meetings that we can both have in-person and Zoom. One of the problems with hybrid is sometimes you can end up with the best of both worlds or the worst of both worlds. I think part of the problem right now is we do not fully have the technology to do hybrid meetings. I'm involved in the nonprofit world and some of the things I do there in these hybrid meetings and they tend to be messed up all the time. One other problem with hybrid meetings right now is to run best, it really takes a staff member dealing with projecting, dealing with chat rooms and the like. And that would be another person that we don't have available. So, I think it's still a little bit open. I think it's something we can get to experiment with over the next couple of years based on the state legislation that was just passed. I think we need to keep playing with. I do understand that with Zoom meetings, there are some people that don't have the technology to get on board. I think we can probably deal with that with training along the way and maybe even access here or elsewhere. So, not to sort of finagle the question, I think it's just open and we need to keep working with it. We need to experiment and see what works best. What I know underneath it all is the key is... The key question ultimately to answer is how can we best offer access to the most people?
Thank you.
Colleen, may I have a follow-up?
Sure.
Go ahead. Being a senior citizen, I have a very hard time navigating a Zoom meeting. And I think, from my understanding, a lot of seniors in town are not able to do Zoom or are not qualified or educated enough to do Zoom. So, do you have a response to that?
I do and I know it's a bit of a challenge, yet I've seen you in meetings that have been Zoom meetings and been completely involved. I think there may be avenues to help senior citizens attend some Zoom meetings. It has to deal with training along the way. We don't want them to be excluded. I mean, look, a simple thing about the Zoom meeting, if by chance the computer technology isn't there, all you need is a phone to dial in. And I think people forget that and it's an important piece. It's one of the reasons that having a staff member to channel all the different... Or to control all the different ways that there are when we connect, when we're on the screen, when some people are on the phone. It's a challenge. I do understand that senior citizens have a challenge with this. I pride myself on knowing absolutely the minimum to get by with technology. I don't like it. I know it's challenging for senior citizens. I think we can help them if we continue with a Zoom.
Do we have a response to the other candidate?
I see a problem with that. I agree. There's sometimes... I have problems on Zoom meetings. I personally prefer being able to talk to someone in person, but there are... The hybrid, it sounds like we need to work on that. It's always a work in progress. Technology is always changing. You could have one and then two weeks later, oh, they came up with an update. But we need to reach out to our elderly population and help them, you know, navigate the Zoom meetings or in-person meetings. I think we, as a town, can make that decision if we all get together and say, let's figure out what's going to work best for us, what's going to work best for the elderly population.
Thank you, Gary. Do we have another question?
Susan Vedderline, 192 Main Street. Okay. Susan Vedderline, 192 Main Street. Many residents have expressed concerns about the importance of protecting water resources in Plimpton. We all depend on wells for our drinking water. How do you plan to support efforts to address this issue?
I want you to go first on that one. Lot to say. Lot to say in three minutes. We are at great risk. The vast majority of how well water, if that well water ever became damaged for many of us, our most valuable asset is our home and real estate. We are surrounded by towns that probably have been less careful on what... On their... On actions they have taken that could damage the aquifer. It's certainly the case in Middleborough. That seems to be the case in Carver right now. One of the many things that town government can do, we can advocate in those other towns. To some extent, they may listen to us. One thing we certainly can do is protect as much open space as possible and to the degree possible, control growth. We over... We, over the last decade, have put almost 500 acres of land into non-developal status and protected in perpetuity. We have fought hard and will continue to fight hard for Board of Health regulations that limit excessive growth. There are a couple of court cases going on, and we're going to continue to fight vigorously for the sake of our water resources to protect them by limit too much growth.
I agree with Mark on that. It's, I live here in Plimpton. I'm on well water. I came from a city that we didn't have to worry about that. I think it's very important. I've rented one house in town that they pulled the water purification system out. Undrink, you know, you could, it was just, it was awful. I now live in a house that has a water purification system, and it's a big change. I'm a firm believer that we should be testing our water, whether the health department's involved, but whatnot, but we do have to protect. That is the utmost important resource we have in town. That matters to everyone in town. I think we need to follow the court cases and all the stuff that's going on and make sure we can preserve the water for our town.
Thank you.
Dominique Sampson, 2 Ring Road. Dominique Sampson, 2 Ring Road. Does that do it? In the upcoming, for the upcoming town meeting, there's an extensive proposal for groundwater preservation from the Bylaw Review Committee. What do you think of that? Have you read it? It's a pretty long piece.
I have not read it yet, but I am all for the preservation of the water because that's our number-one resource. I mean, that, we all have to, have to have it. Whatever preservation plans that they have set up, if it's financially responsible, we need to be taking care of that. But I haven't read the bylaw itself.
Avidly in favor of the groundwater bylaw, very appreciative of the Bylaw Review Committee doing the work to put that in place. It kind of brings up the bigger issue of the really excellent work the Bylaw Review Committee has done over the last few years. One of the most important ways to preserve and protect and perpetuate the kind of town we have. Enlarging on that, I was involved along the way with the solar bylaw that we put in place a few years ago. Even more importantly, maybe the earth removal bylaw that we put in place. I am a really big advocate for these bylaws and what they do to protect the town. There was a time not so long ago when developers and other people from surrounding towns saw Plimpton as the Wild West with no regulation. I think we've done a wonderful job with the Bylaw Review Committee, the Open Space Committee, the Conservation Commission, in the work they've done to protect these things. The most recent example, the earth removal bylaw, is the SLT project down Route 44, and we were able to thwart a, at least for the moment, a project that would entail bringing used projects, reusable materials into town with the risk of affecting our groundwater. So, these bylaws can be unbelievably dry. I think the one for earth, or for groundwater, maybe 10 pages is probably half of the warrant you got. I'm not sure you have to read every word to know. It's really, really good, and I urge everyone to vote for it.
Thank you. More questions? My left.
Hello. My name is Mark Rothfuss. I live at 20 Montello. And not to diminish a lot of the internal issues in the town right now, and it's only human nature to put forth in a question that's very close and near and dear to my heart. And that is, and it's piggybacking on the groundwater, obviously, but, and that is, there's an area of town right behind where I live on Montello, and that's the 44 Carver's RDA project. We have 44 neighbors between LeManuel Cobb, Heather's Path, Montello, and other streets around that area that are in jeopardy, literally in jeopardy today. And there's some new information as of last week, another subdivision plan. Right now, it's a contaminated area, and MEAP is involved, but it seems like they're forging ahead. So, my question is, what can Plimpton, what can our town further do to assist not only those neighbors but the whole town? Because no matter what, something's going to go in there, and no matter what it does, it's going to increase traffic. They put a whole new intersection there with a traffic light, the blinking light. So, what can the town, you know, it's not our land, it's not, you know, it's through the state, but what can we actively do to proactively mitigate the damage to the neighbors and the whole town? So, that's my question. And piggybacking on the SLT thing, that's, I commend the town for that. I was involved a little bit. The town did a really nice job thwarting that little project that we don't need around our area. Thank you.
It's a really difficult question, Mark, because I think we're avid in the hope that whatever goes in over there takes into account its impact on other towns. Part of the problem is we don't have so many tools. One of the things we've been doing is, one or more of the selectmen have been tending meetings as the project, the now-defunct project was envisioned. We've advocated vigorously for concern for our town citizens and done our damnedest to educate boards, commissions, committees, selectmen in Carver that there is impact and that we are concerned about it. To be overly blunt, particularly on camera, the sympathy for our situation by the Carver Board Commission members has been lukewarm at best. I think there are probably other ways for us to advocate, and we have done that. There are private organizations, nonprofit organizations, that are out there advocating for Carver and other South Shore towns to act responsibly. I think we can continue to support them. And to the degree that we have a say in things, the Board of Selectmen have worked really hard to have a warm and collaborative relationship with our state senator and our state representative. And we, the town of Plimpton people and Board of Selectmen can continue to let them know and remind them of our situation. So, not ideal. We don't have as much control as we'd like, but we can continue to make our case heard.
I wasn't aware that they were going to continue with the project out there. I thought it was stopped. Again, if it continues, as a Board of Selectman, we need to reach out, try to get these other towns to realize what effect it has on another town. Like Mark said, there's a lot of committees that we can sit down and talk to, educate them on how it's going to negatively affect our town.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Dempsey. I live at 7 Brook Street. The, I have two questions. First question I wanted to ask about is the, as we know, we have a water farm in town that drains millions of gallons of aquifer water out of our system. My big concern about all of this is our town and the amount of water that's being removed. Have we done any studies or can we do any studies that would reflect the amount of aquifer that we have lost and the potential of losing it? Both of you, please.
That is, like I said, the water is our number-one resource. We have to protect it. We need to get a study out there, if one hasn't been done, to find out what we can do to prevent that or stop that from happening.
Dr. Russo?
Yeah. You're talking about the Rocky Harvest Company and the mining of water, and this is a catastrophe that began a decade and a half ago by some really poor decisions being made, particularly by the Board of Selectmen. The town has fought the mining of the water for these 15 years, and we've spent over $110,000 fighting that operation. The courts have not been sympathetic along the way. Aside from that, I think it was two years ago, the Board of Selectmen sponsored an article at town meeting to hire a hydrogeologist to review the withdrawal of the water and to review Rocky Harvest fulfillment of reporting things. We hired Peter Newton, a very highly-regarded hydrogeologist. He did a study for us. He found that Rocky Harvest was fulfilling their reporting obligations to Department of Environmental Protection. He also analyzed the level of water being withdrawn and found that it was at a level that a lesser level of reporting was necessary. The other thing that we asked Peter to do is give us some, to the degree possible, some evaluation of the impact of the amount of water being taken out. He made clear, and I fully understand, that a full evaluation of the impact of that water removal would probably be six figures, well over $100,000. And we had a budget of a few thousand dollars to do this, but Peter was kind enough to let us know that it was unlikely that the amount of water withdrawn was going to have any major effect on our aquifer. And that was very encouraging because, you know, we're kind of stuck between a hard place. We can't get the courts to help us. Rocky Harvest continues to do what they do, but some reassurance that it's unlikely that the amount of water being withdrawn is significant. All that being said, watching those trucks go in and out every day is just miserable, and I think we all hate that it's happening. Doing the best we can, it's called the Rocky Harvest Company. I think we might call it the Rocky Harver, or horror situation as well. Maybe the biggest lesson of all is a pretty simple mistake made 15 years ago by a selectman has left us with this continuing mess 15 years later. And I think it's one of the reasons that savvy, experienced selectmen are really important aspect of town government. Did I get a bell? First one! Not bad.
Time up. Down. Dr. Russo, when you were making your opening statement, you said you'd like, if I understand it correctly, that you want to follow the progressive future or the progressive attitude of the town, of yourself. Could you explain to me what you mean by the progressive use of your self and what you want to bring to the town as far as the progressive use?
I don't know if I use the word progressive. It's one of those loaded terms who want to be real careful about.
Well, that's why I was wondering why you said it.
What's that?
That's why I was wondering why you said it, because it is a loaded term.
So, if I use the term, I think I meant it, surely, I meant it on the level of kind of open-hearted, open-handed, thoughtful analysis of each issue along the way. You know, it's funny. There was a Board of Selectmen meeting one night, and most of them are reasonably gentle, but someone sort of confronted me like, what are you? You know, are you one of those Republicans? Are you one of those Democrats? And I, without any forethought, I answered, I'm a radical moderate. And I don't know where that came from. It certainly came for not thinking about it. And it was very enlightening for me because I, as I said it, I recognized, yeah, that's exactly what I am. So, if I use the word progressive, I think I meant it in the terms of moderation, of kind of sane analysis of all sides of an issue, struggling with an issue, and then coming to the conclusion and doing our best to implement it and explain it. I have a feeling people do not really have an idea of how much all three of the selectmen now wrestle with all these issues. I spend a fair amount of time in the middle of the night struggling, struggling with some of these decisions. I think we don't take them lightly. So, I'll leave it at that.
Could the challenger respond, please?
The word progressive, you used it as progressive discipline towards the employees. That is a standard that we have to, things that we have to put in place for employees that follows a standard, follows, you know, the discipline that's needed for someone. If it's someone that needs to be, oh, we'll re-educate them, or, okay, that's a fire of offense, no questions asked. You fire, you know, you terminate that person. That was, the progressive discipline is what Mark mentioned, that is a policy that we need to have in place to protect the town and to protect the selectmen when we have this. We have to follow it to the letter. You know, I'm not saying that there's people in this town, employees, that you need, you know, that you're going to use this on, but it's a need to have it in place to protect everyone involved.
Thank you.
Last one?
I'm done. I should be.
Anybody else?
No. Vote.
Nancy? Actually, let's give Dot a chance.
I'm going to stay here if you don't mind me. I can talk loudly.
Okay.
It's Dot Cusman at 36 Goldchester. As we get older, and there's a great number of elderly people in town, as you probably won't, you lose your ability to drive. I wondered how you've got to handle the transportation. I know Gatra's been on the board for 40 years. Is there any other alternative, anything else? The council agent does a very good job with the couple of people they have, but they're not always available. And I wonder, has anybody ever explored other avenues for transportation?
I know there have been some conversations with Gatra. Honestly, I don't know where they are at this point, and it actually reminds me that on my list of things, I think we need to get back to that and see if there's anything It is encouraging that we live in a town where there is this atmosphere on a private level of helping each other and helping neighbors, but you're right, and I appreciate you bringing that up because it's something that needs to get back on our list of. to get back on our list of things that we're exploring. It's hard, we're a little tiny town, we're kind of spread out, but glad to explore that again.
I agree with Mark on the issue of the elderly population, getting them transportation's very, very important. And again, if I'm elected, it will be one of my top priorities to work on the transportation for the elderly population in this town, whatever we have to do to get the job done. That's my goal.
We'll keep reminding you both.
Thank you.
I rather feel like I ought to answer that question, but...
Yeah. Everybody can, but it's a little bit confusing.
We have signed a contract with Gatra. Unfortunately, they have had issues getting drivers. So until they get their issues settled, we can't start. Supposedly, it's going to be coming with the new fiscal year.
I hope it does. But I wonder if there are other alternatives besides Gatra?
Well, we can talk about that within COA, so ask me later, Dot.
Okay. I have a follow-up on Dot's question.
Okay, go ahead.
My follow-up is, considering the seniors in town, what are your thought of changing the town election, town meetings, to Saturday? A lot of us cannot drive at night. And I'd like to hear how you feel about changing it from a Wednesday night to a Saturday.
I know this come up along the way. I haven't thought it through. It's something worth exploring. I wouldn't have a problem with, you know, another one. It's one of those ones, we could try it and see.
But isn't it difficult to change the bylaws? Is it difficult to change the bylaws?
Even if it is, we could.
I think Saturdays are a good time. I agree with the Wednesdays, middle of the week. Saturdays, if we can change it, I think that's a very good idea. Because the more people you can get to these meetings, the more people that can put their input in, that's important.
I'm Suzanne Jafarian, 373 Main Street. And I have a question about the affordable housing piece. You had mentioned affordable housing. And I have some questions. I'm trying to understand the 40B, 40R, the MBTA 3A, like, kind of, in general, what that looks like and the effect on our community, bringing in affordable housing, what that is going to look like. I'm curious what you, your thoughts are on that. And I'd like to hear from you too, Mark, if possible. Thanks.
As far as the MBTA, I think we ought to fight it and do it on our own terms. You know, instead of having something shoved down your throat and they can do whatever they want, make it on our terms. Affordable housing, I'm not talking huge apartment buildings or anything like that. When I say affordable housing, I mean affordable to bring people into town, whether it be a house that's for rent, you know, I'm not, I don't want to see apartments in this town because it's a headache to everything involved. But I would like to see, you know, some way that we can get together, plan that we can make, or work as selectmen to bring people into town. I know it's tough for me. I'm paying rent on a house on County Road that's a mortgage payment. It's tough for me. Like I said, I can't afford a house in town. I've tried. It's just out of my ballpark right now to afford a house in town. But I'm not into these apartment complexes that you see popping up in Plymouth, in Kingston. That's not what this town needs. But we need to stand up and make it to what we want, not what, like, the MBTA is going to try to shove down your throats or anything like that. That's my, you know, that's the way I feel about that. And again, if I'm elected selectman, I want to get input from everybody. Because it's everyone's, you know, it affects everyone in this town. It'll affect the fire department, it'll affect the police department, it'll reflect, you know, everything, that we need to all be on the same page.
Really appreciate the question, and I'm pretty passionate about this. Just very briefly, MBTA legislation is a real challenge. Unfortunately, the Attorney General, two weeks ago, implied that towns that don't adopt the new zoning required by the legislation might be in legal matters beyond losing grants along the way. So it's something we've got to continue to play with. I hate that legislation. I think it totally ignores the uniqueness of towns, particularly small towns on the South Shore. So we may have to take the first step in at least delineating a proposal until we get a better understanding of what the legalities are going to be on that. Much more importantly, so that's point one. Point two, selectmen have been in touch with Habitat for Humanity. We have put forth an interest that they would be willing to do cluster housing, a bunch of small cottages, then with an open space around it. This may be a pipe dream, this is something I've been exploring, Open Space Committee and others, looking for a suitable piece of land that potentially we could buy and do that. I think that would be a really cool piece, very, very different, have architecturally compatible with the town, cluster housing in an open space, in an ideal world, maybe a municipal well on it as well. Potentially CPC money could pay for a fair amount of it. The pleasure of that is the state match, which can be anywhere from 20% to 40%. To get to the most important thing, we, I think, in this town have the answer to our affordable housing needs already. And it has nothing to do with the federal government, the state government, even the town government. It is the accessory dwelling unit bylaw that was passed two or three years ago. This gives each of us the opportunity to devote part of our house to an accessory dwelling and an apartment, or an addition to put on, or if we have a barn or a garage, putting an addition above. This is the opportunity for people that are up against it financially to garner some reward. It's the opportunity to give people the opportunity of lower-cost housing. It's the opportunity for seniors to potentially stay in town when they feel like they're up against it financially. It's the opportunity for young people that cannot deal with the cost of housing now to start out and to stay in this town. So the accessory dwelling unit, I think very few people know about this or have taken advantage of it. It's all there, there are a few hoops to jump through. It's all in the bylaw. Check it out at the Town Clerk's website. Highly recommended, the answer to our problems.
Thank you.
Just have a general, Susan Vedderline, 192 Main Street. I just have a, kind of a general question. What do you think are the three most important skills needed to be an effective selectman? And Gary, go first.
The ability to listen to what other people are saying, the ability to figure out a plan to diffuse the situation, and to work as a team with other committees within the town to bring out a, bring, lost the word, you know, to bring conclusion to something that will work out for all of us.
I don't think I can make it just three. So number one, the number one skill isn't so much a skill, particularly for Board of Selectmen, it's experience. I have served on the Finance Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Open Space Committee, the Fire Police Building Task Forces, and I think three or four others that I don't quite know the names of. You know, my predecessor, Joe Freitas, who, with whom I disagreed on a lot of things. One thing I totally agreed on is Joe understood that people had to put in the time to garner the experience, particularly at the more important boards in town. I'd say over and over again, "They got to put in the time, they got to put in the time." I think the first year before I ran for selectman, I sat in on the meetings for a year. In my heart of hearts, I don't think anyone should be a selectman until they've sat in, has they've been a FinCon member for at least two years. It's how they learn what town finance is all about, which is ultimately how they run the town, how they learn all the players along the way. So that's one skill. Another skill is having a clear sense of priorities and being able to prioritize. There's so much more work to do for a selectman than there is time in the day to do it. So the importance of sorting out what's more important or achievable, what's less important along the way. And then, I think frankly, the third skill is having a list of accomplishments along the way, things that one can build on as they learn more and more how to run town government. A really tough skin is helpful, a lot of energy is helpful. The ability to take a punch and not take it to heart and not punch back are other skills.
I can agree with that.
Colleen Moran, 11 Granville Bakerway. Mark, you had said that capital stabilization would be a good chunk of the money for a fire station. I know from when I was the treasurer, we only have a block of like $500,000, of which 300 is coming for the police department, 200 we try to get for roads. How is this not going to affect our taxes?
What was the last sentence?
The, about $200,000 Robbie needs for roads.
Yeah.
A year. How is this not going, if we do the fire station, how is this not going to affect our taxes?
Well, and I'm not sure whether it will or not. I think the goal should still be, potentially, that it doesn't affect taxes. The capital stabilization fund, the balance may be somewhat low now, but there is money coming in each year. Certainly, if we build the fire station, we're going to have to borrow. The hope is, between that borrowing, the money coming in, and continuing our best to be frugal in general, that it can be done without taxes. I think the key on the capital stabilization, I think I alluded to it at the beginning, there are other towns that had big industries coming in and have immediately used the money for their operating budget, which is the absolute road to hell along the way. So the point being on capital stabilization is one, that we are obligated to put money in. And the second piece, I was just starting out as a selectman when we made the bylaw on this, but the other thing we did is we made it that to tap into that capital stabilization needed a positive vote of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee...
Two-thirds.
And the Capital Committee.
And two-thirds.
And a two-thirds vote of town meeting. The point being, purposefully, to kind of handcuffs ourselves a little, so we just didn't just scatter that money needlessly. You're right, there isn't a huge amount in it now.
Current debt is what's using it up.
If we're borrowing over, let's say, 15 years or 20 years, I think it can pay not all, but a considerable portion of the payments, I hope. That's still open.
Gary, do you want to speak for that?
Nope.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Joe Beck. I lived on 64 Main Street for the last 36 years. And I would like to ask both of you, what are your plans for speeding in our town that has been terrible as of the last couple of years, and the truck issues that, in our town, especially when the kids are on Upland Road waiting to get on school buses, and they're coming flying out of SLT and everyplace else? What is our plan? Can't let them get away with it anymore. Thank you.
I agree with you. I live on the corner of Lake Street and County Road. It says, you know, "Lower your speed." People come down County Road from Kingston, they're flying. Coming down Lake Street, coming up to the stop sign at County Road, I don't know how many times I've seen them just take that turn on the County Road into Halifax, not even stopping at the stop sign. I believe we need to increase our, the law enforcement's enforcement of the speeding in the state, you know, in our town. That's the real way you're only going to stop it, is enforcement. I think they need to increase the enforcement around town as well.
Appreciate the question. I'm absolutely passionate about this one as well. We've tried stuff with the speeding. We declared speed zones, we did the painting on the roads, we did the flashing things. None of it seems to work. I will readily admit, I go through the flashing things way beyond what I should. It needs work. We understand the speeding. Either Christine Joy or I want to continue with this. This is on my list for Sunday morning after election, if re-elected. One of, more enforcement or at least exposure to police cars out there would be helpful. I'll tell you one little thing, which I've tried lately, which is stunningly amazing, and another one of those things done by citizens rather than government, is I've tried pushing the speed control thing on my steering wheel, setting it to the speed limit, and then driving the speed limit. It drives me stark raving crazy, I can't go that slow, and the people behind me are ready to kill me for going that speed. But just think about it as a thought experiment. What if all of us decided that we were going to go the speed limit in town, two-thirds of the speeding would go away? They'd all be right behind us, giving us the finger and screaming at us. Yeah, think about it. So I think that's something I want to explore more as a potential campaign and kind of a community thing in us collectively working on it. The truck thing drives me crazy. We absolutely want to limit truck traffic to the numbered highways. They should not be going down Main Street, the jewel, the gem of our town. They shouldn't be speeding down Prospect Street. We tried this about three years ago. We went through the Old Colony Planning Council. They did a medium job, not as well as they could, of making an application. It turns out, to do these truck exclusions, we need the surrounding towns to agree with us or to agree to it happen. When we did this three years ago, Halifax was a mess, Carver was a mess, we didn't even, and Kingston said no outright. Sunday after election, this is the first one on my list, is I want a truck exclusion in this town to keep them to the numbered lanes. Whether we're going to be able to do it or not is hard. Department of Transportation is just regulation-laden, no offense to you guys, they're regulation-laden, and they don't make it easy for little towns to kind of control what's going on. If I had my way and you can't do it, I'd make the speed limit 30 miles an hour every single road in town. I'd... I would go stark raving crazy, have 100 tickets, but, but that can't be done. We're too sparsely populated, the regulations don't allow it.
Anybody else?
Jackie Rafferty, 100 Tuxit Road. I have a follow-up question to Mr. Beck's question. Do, does the town of Plumpton keep the revenue from tickets given to people speeding?
I don't know the answer to that. I asked a town administrator about that a few months ago, and somewhere along the way, we didn't get back to it. And that's, thank you. It's one more to take a look at Sunday, Sunday morning, if reelected. You know, the truth is, somewhat unrelatedly, but since I'm gabbing and excited now, we have a bunch of police cars that end up parked over there, they're really tinted, you don't know if anyone's inside. I hope that we can start just planting them around town as decoys or for people to see a police car try to slow down.
I hope we do get a response about this, because I can tell you, there's a lot of people in this town that are very, very concerned and puzzled. And I can tell you as someone who's lived here my whole life and talking with neighbors and other people in town, anecdotally, this town always used to have a reputation, don't go speeding through Plumpton. If you do, you will get a ticket. And now, very few of us, I read these great posts about Officer Leronimo stopping people in the middle of the night, doing great work, giving tickets. But those of us who are trying to take a walk feel like our lives are in danger? And we used to see cruisers parked all over the town. It was notorious for giving out, so it seems to me if the incentive of collecting money to help put in the town budget is gone because the revenues might be given to the state, and that would answer the question, but it doesn't solve the problem because whether or not we're making money from speeding tickets, which is great, it's still a safety issue. And it's becoming more and more of a problem all the time. And people, I think I speak for a lot of people when I say people don't feel that it's being addressed.
Look, I think you're exactly right about asking about the ticket fees. One of the problems, of course, is the manpower. And I would love for Plumpton to be known as a town that you have to go the speed limit, or you get a ticket, or you get behind a really slow driver. And if the ticket revenue would help us in more manpower, that'd be good. There is that problem of limited resources, limited policemen to do the work of giving the tickets. And I really appreciate being reminded about the ticket fees, though.
And they were giving tickets.
Got it.
All right, thank you.
I actually have something to say to that. I agree with the manpower in the police department. Law enforcement has changed since COVID-19, okay? Other things have changed in law enforcement. And it's a nationwide thing. The respect for law enforcement is gone. When I was a kid, a police officer talked to you, yes, sir, yes, sir. Nowadays, they just, you know, and that's a huge problem. The lack of respect for law enforcement. We can work on it with education to our younger students that are in the Denet. I think it's an excellent idea that they have a police resource officer there. That is very important. Again, to gain that respect back, we need to educate the younger, younger people, the ones in our elementary schools, that we're not there. Not every officer is going to shoot you, not every officer is gonna, you know, it's, the stuff that's going out there right now is awful. There are a lot of good, good police officers out there that try to make a difference. And there's two or three bad apples that that's the biggest thing they bring out, you know? They bring that up and, you know, oh, this officer just did CPR and saved a baby's life. That's the news, it has it on there for one day. A couple days later, in another part of the country, oh, these three police officers arrested this guy and they got into a fight. You see that on the news weeks after it's happened. You know, so I think the respect needs to be taught to our elementary kids. And I think a school resource officer would be a great help to that.
Thank you. Anybody else? I, when I emailed you, I said that you would have the opportunity to ask one another a question. Would you like to avail yourselves of that opportunity? Up to you.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Mark, a question for you. I understand that you had a lot of contact with the committees in town before you ran as a selectman. What would you recommend for me? Not serving on a committee and wanting to be a part of this town as a selectman?
Thank you, good question. So if by chance you're elected, Sunday morning, sign up for the Massachusetts Municipal Association New Selectman Training Program that I think happens in June. It's actually interesting, things are so much better than they were 10 years ago when I first started in terms of Massachusetts Municipal Association. There's so much good stuff out there. For someone interested in getting involved in town government in general, I think the first thing is to attend meetings, whatever board, commission, or committee they're interested in, in attending, and finding one that the issues involved and that the people involved are things they're compatible with. I mentioned the Finance Committee. Being a member of the Finance Committee is, it's actually a challenge as well. If you start out absolutely blank on finance, it takes a while. But as I said, I think I sat in for a year on board of selectman meetings before I got involved. And I, it brings up the bigger issue, that little tiny town that we are, most of town government is done by part-time employees. We run this town with volunteers. And it tends to be the same volunteers in four or five committees, and there's a bunch of us volunteers that get really tired along the way. It is one of the jobs, one of the goals of the selectman, and to encourage others to be involved. So I really appreciate the question, and I really appreciate that there's an answer of joining commissions, committees, boards, and then visiting and then serving.
Thank you.
And Mark, do you have a question for Gary?
Sure. So Gary, it's a thrill to meet you and spend time with you, actually. I didn't know you were such a cool guy. We were, each offered the opportunity by the newspaper to send in an article, meet the candidate along the way. And I'm wondering why you didn't avail yourself of that opportunity?
Because this is the first time I heard about it. I understand that I work full-time. I work 24 hours on a Tuesday and 24 hours on a Friday. A lot of time, I do spend a lot of time at work. There's, again, we run in the private sector, we're running into staffing problems. So there's times that I just don't get out of work. And after working a 24-hour in the city that I work in, it's just like, you know, I can't keep my eyes open anymore, I just am tired. I didn't know about it. I wish I did, because I would have done some. I appreciate the emails that I got to come and join this, because this is very helpful, you guys are going to, you know, you guys are going to get to know me, and I'm learning from you. I didn't know about it.
So I don't know what happened with that. I think we all missed the opportunity of getting to know you through that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Closing remarks, we each have three minutes.
So we do one, two, three, shoot?
No, you can go first.
Okay, three minutes. Why do I feel like I'm the best candidate? Four reasons. Clear sense of priorities, protecting Plumpton's unique nature, balanced frugal fiscal policy, effective collaborative civil welcoming town government, concern particularly for children, education, affordability of senior citizens. So clear sense of priorities. The experience to constructively make those things happen, a proven track record over time, long list of accomplishments, not the least of which of the parks, building town government brick by brick, helping create and nurture the town administrator position, helping establish the community electrical aggregation program, dealing with SLT, and the list goes on and on and on. So clear sense of priorities, lots of experience to make that happen, proven track record, and then a willingness to plug away at it, a willingness to do the work. And I greatly appreciate the opportunity to support this town. I greatly appreciate the sense of purposefulness that comes out of stewardship, whether stewardship for land, stewardship for water, or stewardship for the beautiful land town that we're offered.
Thank you. Gary?
I'm new to politics. I'm willing to give this a try, I'm a good listener. I'm a good problem solver. I'm very supportive of this town, I love this town. And, you know, again, I'm new, I'm willing to learn. It's time for a change. Nothing to say, nothing bad about the selectmen that we have presently. Just time to get some new blood in. And I was under, first of all, I was under the impression that my opponent wasn't going to run. And I already said that I'd do it. And here I am today, it brings us to this. I have the utmost respect for the selectmen that we have now. I hope to bring an informational knowledge to the selectmen about public safety. I've been in public safety for over 40 years. I love that job, I love this town. And I thank all of you for being here today. And I hope to be your next selectman.
Thank you. So thank you to Gary Somero and Mark Russo. Thank you all for coming. Now go out and enjoy the day.